It's now six o'clock. Do I have a motion to call the meeting to order?
I make a motion to call the meeting to order.
All those in favor? Laurel?
Aye.
Lindsay? Jay? Jen?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes, yes.
Kathy?
Yep.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob? Here we go. Did you, uh, oh, we should do an introduction. Sorry.
Yes, yes. So this is Ann Jones. She has really, she's teamed up with Sue. She also purchased the equipment for the art installation project. And she has donated that to us, which is lovely.
A wonderful, um, consistent donation.
Yes, yes.
To the library. I write the thank you notes to you.
It's very true. It's very true. Yes.
Since I was, was taught.
Yeah.
It's been everything. It's been my temple.
So I'm gonna give you a copy of, this is the draft of the policy. I figure other guidelines could just be guidelines, but that's what the trustees, they help, they've all received it. Um, but where you have to go, do you, what order do you want to go in? Do you want?
Want to do this first?
I mean, since Ann is here, we could definitely do that.
Okay, let's do the minutes first and then we'll go to the, um. Any questions on the minutes?
My name is Miss Phil.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Is this spelled?
My name, Laurel's. Not Laurel. You put enough letters in there. It's P U C, it's not P U L C H.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I will make that correction.
No, it's just because of the way it's pronounced, everyone wants to put that L in there. It's got enough letters. But that's okay.
I want to blame, I want to blame autocorrect on that.
What did I hope?
Autocorrect.
Nancy, I, I have one thing. I, I haven't read that whole introductory thing that you kindly sent out, but I did notice that part of, part of it, it said the minute should tell who is remote and who is present.
Oh yeah, I noticed that.
Did you notice that?
Yes.
Like in the, in the attendance part?
Okay, I will make that note.
It just, it, you could see that in the, the, um, welcome packet from the town clerk that Bob sent out.
Okay.
Yeah, she mentioned that, so I just thought I'd bring it up that probably she tried to do that.
Thank you. I remembered that discussion when, um, the lawyer came in.
Yes.
And I thought he had said it was, it, you could decide either way, so I didn't know we had decide, it was decided.
It goes, it's in the welcome packet from the town clerk.
Yeah, I didn't see that, so thank you for pointing that out.
I haven't read the whole thing either, but I just thought maybe we should keep that in mind.
I will definitely make that adjustment.
Thank you. Otherwise, they were fine.
There was one, um, correction I made, uh, after I had sent them out, um, and that was the date of the, uh, truck night.
Oh, okay.
Which I mistakenly said was in September, when it was actually on August 28th, I believe, so I'm gonna make that correction as well.
Thank you. Thank you for doing them.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, there's one omission. The amount for state aid is not stated.
That's because it wasn't stated during the meeting, Bob. Um, I went back and listened to the recording just to make sure, and I, I did have a question about that because I could have done the math and inserted it, but I wanted the meeting to be accurate as to what was actually stated.
You found the meeting. You did, you actually found me.
I emailed it to her, so I, I, yeah, I lost it in my email and I, as soon as Nancy mentioned it, I searched for it in my email and I sent it to Chris, so it should be up soon, or if it's not already, and then I sent it to Nancy.
And thank you, it was very helpful.
Yes, I'll, I'll be, I'll definitely be more vigilant about that in the future. It's, as soon as it shows up, which should be almost immediately.
Sure me, I thought it was just all about it.
Soon as our. Soon as our, mine or not.
Any other comments on the minutes? Let's have a vote for approval.
Yeah, we have.
Oh yeah, I moved and we said the minutes is amended.
And I'll second.
Okay, Laurel?
Yes.
Jan? Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes. I need to put pictures of this one. No? No? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Doing the policy, so I am going to give Ann a lot of credit here. I have used a lot of her wording and I paraphrased a few things, and I've, I have added a few things and taken a few things out, but Ann's an expert in this. So.
Well, my, my background is that, um, I've been an artist for 25 years, and I've been president of the Women's Art Association for 10 years. I retired in that position two years ago, but I was still on the board. Um, and in the course of those 10 years, we always featured our work, particularly during the summer, um, at a local library. I'm talking, well, fairly local, I'm talking Snooberry, um, Havrell, Hamilton, Wenham, Topsfield, et cetera, Georgetown. Um, and I basically drew from all of that experience and offered that as help to Darcy as she created some policy agreement for the use of this library. And, um, I was just looking through it and it's always fine, except I do, may I?
Yes.
Bring up one thing that pulled me a little bit. Um, I will provide a certificate of insurance showing the Town of Broland as additional insurance.
So, there's a reason for that. I checked with the town administrator and she checked with the town insurance and they said that I had to put that in there.
Most of the, all of the libraries put down that they are not, a disclaimer, a waiver, that they are not responsible for the art, the, um, the, we, um, or during installation or while it's in place. And I have to say that to create, to get a, an insurance waiver, do you know how much it costs? Well, for our art festival on Bradford Common, it costs, um, over a hundred dollars. And most artists, I'm talking about not just, not me necessarily, because I could probably do that, but if you try to encourage local artists who are maybe just starting out, um, to require that of them could be really detrimental to having a, an ongoing show here. Um, I, I would personally go with just the waiver saying that you do not, we do not accept, neither, neither we nor the Town of Broland will be responsible for anything that happens to your art, bottom line. And all artists are really, all the artists I know are willing to go with that.
Okay, what do you guys think?
I agree. If we're trying to pull people in, it seems like it might push people away, like it's supposed to be a showcase, but you added it after meeting with Rebecca, so.
Yes, so I think it was more of a suggestion too, so we can try it without.
So this is the wording you would like to substitute.
Or, well, that wording was already in there. I can, if we take out that last sentence, the rest of it is. Yeah, it's, it's just the very last sentence. If we take out that last sentence, then the rest of it basically covers all of it, so.
When the artist signs the agreement, it would cover it.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, and if there are any issues that come up, we can take that as it comes, but it is a waiver, so that is, if, if you all think that is, that's okay. I'm, I'm okay.
I defer to your expertise.
Thanks. Um, all of the libraries we've worked with have just simply the disclaimer, you know, the waiver in that previous paragraph prior to this.
Okay.
And it's, it's worked everywhere, and I, I can't think of an instance in which there's been an issue, and this is going back two decades or more, so, um.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll write in here, take out, and that'll be, that could be an amendment to everything else.
I wanted to offer just one other, like it's just a word, one word change.
Oh yeah.
Um, in the second paragraph, when it says even a brief blurb about the nature, I was going to suggest changing the word blurb to like a brief explanation.
Oh, yes.
It just sounded a little bit nicer in honor of the art.
Our profession. Yeah. Brief description.
I defer to you.
I get what it means. It's supposed to be, the idea is that it's, um, a mighty.
Yes.
Paper, but.
I understand. I completely, I, I, yes, I'm taking. Okay, that's changed. Does anybody else have anything that they suggest?
If not, I, I'd make a motion that we accept the, um, policy on, uh, as amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Laurel?
Yes.
Jen? Nancy? Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob? Yes, Nancy? Okay. All in agreement.
Yes.
We got it.
Yes.
You know, Steve, Matt Bonatter and I have been talking about this for decades, and I, when this new library was built, because when I was a little one, I was going to be old one, climbing those steps and, and I can still remember sitting on the floor in the bright by the children's section, I was really good at it. But, um, we've been talking about this and I'm just so excited to have it, and glad to help.
Well, we're thankful for your generosity. My goodness.
You know, it's something I can give back to the town.
It's, it's wonderful.
And you can know when this will take place?
Well, if, um, if the hanging system is in place.
Right, so I can tell you that, you know, Steve has a lot on his plate, but he's working on it, so various Mondays and Wednesday mornings, he said he'll be installing pieces, um, the walls, so not the art pieces, but the pieces of.
The hanging.
The hanging sheet. Um, so, will, I mean, I think starting in the new year, just to have it fresh is a good kind of estimate. Um, but now that we have this in place, we'll be able to put out the word that we are looking for artists and we can have a calendar of who will be when, which will be exciting. Ann will be first. That's already been decided. Um.
You can spread the word.
Oh yes, through your many connections.
Actually, we already, um, I'm, I'm on the board still at the GHAA and I do the newsletter, and, um, I've already entered into, um, the next newsletter, Think About Us. And also, once a year, we issue a special issue, we offer a special issue, um, which reaches about a thousand people by the goal. We have, um, 800 subscribers, but the newsletter reaches about a thousand people currently. And, um, we have, we have actually, I have actually put into it already, even though it won't come out until March, but we'll have it in the newsletter. Of special resources for artists who wish to have solo shows, because the GHAA does. Uh, special resources for artists who wish to have solo shows, because the GHAA does, you know, orchestrate, it's just group shows, the actual art association just does group shows. But we provide this long list of opportunities for artists locally to display their work in a solo show. And so that's very much in the works.
Well, we do preference to roll it out as far.
I would suggest you do. I don't know how many there are here. Um, I was trying to think back because for ten years, we had Wine and Art at Breezy Park.
Yes.
And I did that all ten years. Um, but a, a lot of them were, they were just from surrounding towns mostly. Um, I don't know how many are actually in Groveland. Um, we'll find out hopefully that there are more than we suspect. That would be lovely.
I remember it, the land of youth booked out for three years.
Yes. Oh, so you're familiar with that? Yes.
I used to be the tour.
I'm sorry, your name?
Jan.
Jan? I, I worked with you, right? When I had my shows there, two or three or four times. Yes, I totally would familiar. Yes. Oh, right.
No, it's a very popular thing. We're thrilled.
Yes.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Um, I had to be of assistance in any other way that I can be. So, and Darcy will let me know the progress.
Yes.
Of course.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to be coming.
Thanks so much.
Somebody else can have a good cheer. Or it can just.
Okay, Laurel.
Okay, well, I sent you um, friends from Bartholomew and accident. Today I received something from them. Um, which I was gone all day. I just got home fifteen minutes before here. Kathy can attest. Um, so I will send this out. It gives how much money is in each trust funds from Bartholomew. I didn't, I had no access to this online extent. So we have that. Um, as far as Vanguard, like I said, we still, my check hasn't come in. Uh, the third quarter report has not come in yet. Kathy's been working on it. And Kathy, do you want to talk or do you want me to tell you what you said, told me?
I finally was able to.
Pick up.
Today.
Wait, wait, we can't hear you.
Okay. Having a hard time with this. Can you hear me now?
No.
No. So you want me to say? You want me to tell?
Yes, go ahead, Laurel.
Okay. So basically Kathy's been working on it because I had no access to the Vanguard. They still had Barbara Galvin. They didn't even have Mary, um, Mary Lou Costello as treasurer. So Kathy's been the co-signer for all, all along. She got and spent many, many hours, documented all the time that she spent and, you know, who she spoke to through in Vanguard, finally found a person who is able to help her. Um, she could tell you the story. Lots of hours. I appreciate Kathy. And um, as of today, something's up. Yeah, it's me and my voice. I don't know why. Anyway, as of today, the paperwork has been signed to close Vanguard account, but it needs to be notarized by bank notary. So Kathy's going to do that. Have it taken here. And the money. It will be sent to her and she can do what she wants with it, she said. Um, because they, it, it's just this crazy account. So anyway, we will wait to get that check.
No, where's the money?
Where? Okay, so the idea was to reinvest that and give it to Bartholomew or use that money, put it into the checking account and use it to um, help with furniture, although we have the donation account too that we could use for the furniture.
We discussed that we're gonna use it for the furniture.
Right, but we don't have it yet. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, but go back to my question. The transfer, closing Vanguard.
Yes.
The money is gonna be transferred to where?
Going to Kathy and Kathy will put it in wherever, in the checking account. Kathy, can you answer that?
I couldn't hear the question.
Why isn't the check going directly to the checking account? From the, the check.
I'm the signer on it and that's the only way they will issue it.
Final.
But if some, if somebody would prefer to take it over and have it done differently, I can just get you all the material box.
Didn't hear all the words.
I think Kathleen and I are, are not able to hear what's going on there.
Yes, that's what's happening.
Okay, so Nancy, you can't hear?
No. First of, first of all, there's a terrible echo, so it's been very difficult to follow the conversation. But about a minute ago, the um, whole conversation just started cutting out and.
Get rid of it. That's good.
Now, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Needed.
Is the echo gone?
And the echo is gone.
Oh, good.
The echo gone from us too.
Well, what we'll need is Kathy to unmute.
Followed about. Money's going to Kathy and then it's gonna go.
Into the checking.
So we're deciding it's going to the checking account?
Yes.
That's the only place it can go. What, unless I cash it, go on a tip.
And whatever's left over, we can take and deposit. Because that was trust funds. We could deposit whatever's left over. It's, it's twenty, what is it, twenty-three thousand?
It is twenty-four thousand, seven hun- seven hundred, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents as of today. As of the close of yesterday. So it will go out as of the close of today. I'll receive the check after I have the whole form, the five-page form notarized. And then it will go to me and be nice to me and I'll turn it over to the library.
Nice trip. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's a story with that. Uh, we.
But still, I need to nail it down. So it's gonna go into the checking account?
Yes.
Okay.
That being said, hold on.
But did you have, excuse me, one second. Bob, did you have, you seem uncomfortable with that whole plan?
No, 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 because we talked about two different things.
Oh, I see. Breaking it up and putting it into the accounts in the Bartholomew fund.
That's correct. So all we're just trying to do is clarify where it's.
No matter where it goes or what it does, it has to go into the checking account. Or it comes to me and it has to go into the checking account.
Okay.
And then from there, we can.
Decide what.
Furniture and.
We'll wait till we get the furniture.
Yeah, yeah. Um, anyway, and then the rest we put in there. Um, that's if if we have a checking account. So we have a checking account. We have checks.
We have signatures.
And we have signatures and, you know, we have the checks and we made the deposits as I told you. And then um, I received a phone call from the bank. It is TD Bank, saying, well, the tax ID number you gave us is for the town. Trustees. And so we're under the town. Well, we need, you need to have your own tax ID. Or the town has to say, yes, it's okay. So I went and talked to Michelle Beegan, who is the town treasurer. And she said she would get back to me. She didn't call, but I just see as I sit here now, she emailed me this afternoon. So she spoke to Ivan, who's the man at the bank, as well as the accountant of the town. And looked over letters from previous library treasurers and Denise Dembrowski, who was our former, um.
Finance director.
Finance director, thank you, to make sure that we are all doing the right thing by the law. With that said, as you know, all money in the town of Groveland's name or using the town's tax ID is to be in the custody of the town treasurer. And then she labels, you know, MGO on X forty-six. The trust funds that are left to the town of Groveland Library or Langley Adams Library must stay in the custody of the town. The trustees have permission to use the income in the ways set forth in the wills of the trust funds. You could set up your own tax ID, but only the trust funds that are bequeathed to the Board of Trustees ID. My recommendation is to close the TT Bank account that was just opened. And when you want to expend from the trusts, have Bartholomew send the money to general fund and you will go through the warrant process. It is clean and it can be tracked correctly. Darcy can also print reports through the software that tracks all transactions. In summary, everything stays pretty much the same. Trustees continue to invest as they see fit. And the one change that is expending from the trusts will go through the warrant process. Please let. So when I spoke to you, Kathy, I hadn't gotten this.
Okay.
Have a checking account.
Huh?
You always have.
I don't understand.
Hmm, so.
And how things are different and, oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Uh, well, I think you and I had discussed, if you go and just talk to Rebecca and.
Go with our.
The world is to get a tax ID number. And at one time, a long time ago, the library had its own tax ID number. Then one of previous finance director came into, but that was canceled out. It's just, if you just tell Rebecca that we need this for the, for the banking purposes and only for that, it would be nice to for uh, Darcy, when she does make purchases, if we had our own tax ID number. But um, that's what it would be used for and nothing else.
Because I mean, how did we even set up a Bartholomew account? Without, did we do that under the ID?
Barbara would know.
I mean, this, we never had any issues.
Remember. Laurel, when we set up our Bartholomew account, the town already had, hundreds of thousands of dollars in trust funds for the town with Bartholomew.
Right.
So they just, apparently they used that tax ID number.
And just put us under it like a little.
Yes, because we didn't have to get a tax ID number at the time.
All right, thank you. I was wondering how we got that.
Initially, my suggestion and I initially had talked to Bartholomew and that was what they had told me.
So I mean, I am planning to go see Rebecca, but this is what is from my response.
I think that she's, she's just trying to find things to help. And the easiest thing, talk to Rebecca and let her, just so we need a
I will, yeah.
ID number, please, or a letter from Rebecca saying we can use the town's tax ID number.
Right. I mean, it just. Yeah.
Process. Yeah.
So I'm just being upfront, letting you know any correspondence that is I'm receiving. So that's that, but um.
And that whole thing that she looked at from Denise, quoting Denise, that was all wiped out from the um, the town, the town, I who am I? The, the lawyers for the town at the time um, had written, that went back and forth. If you remember, Beth Burton was the chair at the time and she met with the trustee, she met with the selectman. And she met with um, the town, the town attorney. And so that was all, there was much more that happened after that, which was just to keep it the way it is. And there's a lot of correspondence about that should be in our files.
Can I ask you a question, Kathy?
You can.
I, I've forgotten. How did the money get into the Vanguard account in the first place? Where'd that come from?
It came from the trust funds that were able to be used at the discretion of the library trustees.
So it seemed like that, so, I mean, it would.
Vanguard.
Yeah, but I was just saying, if it's originally trust fund money, we're supposed to be able to spend it any way we want to anyway. Is that true?
We were able to what? Lee, I'm sorry.
We can spend it any way we want to, but it's trust fund money, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. So I'm just saying, uh, but her, her note there seemed to say, well, this isn't trust fund money, but it is.
Oh, it is trust fund money.
Yeah, but the note that, that Laurel just said.
It was six thousand dollars voted by the trustees to take out, to invest wisely in any kind of mutual funds. That's it. We picked Vanguard at the time. It was the easiest fund family to uh, deal with and they take small amounts. They no longer, I don't believe it's the same anymore. I haven't used them myself in years. But we took out six thousand dollars from, in equal portions from each of the trust funds that say to be used at the discretion of the trustees, to be used for the library, that kind of thing. They weren't narrow, narrow purposes. And we took out six thousand dollars. Now, as I closed it out, it is now twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. So it did make money. It was well, well invested and cautiously invested also. And that money, if we were to split it up, to put it back into the trust funds, it would go evenly because it was taken out evenly.
It wasn't from, so some of the trust funds may be from town of Groveland. I agree. That's what I think she was saying. Those would come into.
But that, that was, like I said, that was old, old. There's been much more correspondence since that. And it had a final, it had a fin- finality to it. And there was a whole file about it, but it doesn't have anything to do with that now.
Right.
But yeah, I think Rebecca's the best.
I will, I will be, yeah, I. You know, the bank, when the bank contacted me and I go down and talk to him, he said, go see Michelle Beegan, because she's the one that, you know.
But Rebecca is, is the administrator. He would be the one.
So I will be, well, she was supposed to be meeting with her, she told me, now that she met with.
Is there gonna be an issue setting up the checking account?
The checking account's there. We paid the checks.
They're looking for, they're the one that's looking for a tax ID verification. So do they care whether it's the town or we have our own?
No, as long as.
Is that gonna make any difference between what goes in and out of that checking account?
No, what happens is if, it ought to use the town's tax ID number, they just want a note from apparently the town administrator saying that we have that permission to use that for that account.
But when I asked for that, it's like, you know.
It generated all this other stuff. Okay, so we need to go to Rebecca.
Yeah, and I will. I mean, after the fourth day, I can't.
And, and there's already balances in the checking account to the two of, what, fifteen hundred dollars, I think.
Um.
Somewhat around that. The original amount and then they sent that, citizens sent the remainder.
Right, no, it's one thousand, one thousand, two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when this check goes in, it will be twenty twenty-five thousand, ninety-nine. And change, yeah.
They're gonna accept the check.
They've taken all my money. They made us buy checks. They took out a, you know, a draft to pay for the checks. So, yeah, and there's.
Matter of getting, using the tax, is it having permission, a written permission from the town to use their tax ID or permission from town to open, get our own tax ID number. And that's a simple process.
The ministry and authority.
Right, well, they are saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Go to the church. Follow directions. All right, so that's that. All right. That's mine. Isn't that enough?
Yes.
That's a fun one.
When I receive that check, when I receive the check from Vanguard, I'll sign it over to Laurel and then she can deposit it in the checking account and have the paperwork that accompanies it.
Sign it.
What? I'm sorry?
You can do it because you're the co-signer. You remember, you signed all that.
Right, I mean, but I just think it's maybe cleaner if I hand it over.
Okay.
And if Laurel disappears the next day, we'll understand. You won't go to London.
No, never.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. Darcy, you're up.
Okay, I have a lot for you, I guess. Um, all right, so thankfully we've already. Um, all right, so thankfully we've already done the policy, so I'll go through the, the main stuff first. Um, statistics are there, pretty on par as usual. Any questions about the CIRC statistics? Okay. And then the standout programming. I of course chose Reinforce Reptiles because it was the, the biggest youth program um, last month. And then the two authors, BJ McNally and Matt Cost were here. And that seemed to be a relatively, um. They were authors who came to the, the Mystery Book Con that Sue had wanted to, hello Lindsay. To uh, have here to do their own program. And it worked well because they were friends and they were able to um, come the same night, so.
It's a good program.
It was a good program. There you go. So then you have the numbers below. I will say there um, was a lot of illness last month. Um, so some numbers are uh, lower than usual, like adult. But um, the youth one was, was pretty darn good, so. So uh, those are the, the programming things and then the warrants. Um, oh my gosh, I left twenty-four. Wrong me. Okay, I promise.
Yeah.
I will change that. You know what I mean though. You know, you know it's for fiscal year twenty. Okay, so twenty-five oh nine was six thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And then twenty-five eleven was six, six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. And then the total was twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents. And I'll say um, I think we did the, the highest um, costs were Ingram, we purchased the new uh, printer copier, which will be installed when the um, the wifi is installed. We'll have um, Tom from MBLC do it. Um, so those kind of drove up the, the September warrants. Um. State aid, they haven't met yet. They usually start meeting for certifications in November. So cross our fingers, we have good news at the November meeting. But if I hear sooner than that, I will definitely email the board as usual and let you know that we have been certified. Everything was everything met the, what we needed to meet, so we um, we should be good. Hopefully the um, that, that flexibility form won't make anything delayed, but it, I don't think it should. I've, I've never actually dealt with it, but I, I think it's, it's pretty standard. And our flexibility form is just like a, hey, please give us a hundred percent. We did ninety percent, which is great, but um. And then I had been asked to get the Digital Commonwealth membership amount. So it goes according to the library budget. So ours, our library would qualify as a two hundred dollar fee per, per year. So that is what was, I don't know if you all would like to proceed with that, but that is the information.
And that gives us in, input into educational programs and someone.
Well, they, they can digitize our um, archival things.
They can be, that's, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, okay. When I clicked on it, it's like, okay, we have access to those things.
Yeah, so it would be full public access once it's uploaded. It's run by the BPL, um.
So is there a fee for each item that you give them to digitize, do you know? Or does the two hundred dollars cover all the digitization?
That I'm not sure. This is just what I, I saw, um. I can pursue it in more depth. But this is, I just saw that it was two hundred and I thought it had covered it. But I wouldn't quote me on that.
I know, I, I would think it does, but it might be good to know.
Yeah.
But before you pursue it, you have to be a member. So it's, you know, unless we're a member, we can't go and say, well, you have a program to digitize.
Well, no, we could ask those questions.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely ask those questions.
The membership, how many items you could do per year per membership, I mean, maybe limitations. It'd just be good to get as much information. I, I think we should go for it. I just feel more comfortable knowing a little bit more about it.
I understand that.
Now I tried to go on the link and I couldn't get in. Said I need approval.
Oh.
I just clicked on it and it worked. I was trying to find out.
Maybe it's.
What in, what in the world?
Well, approve that, Darcy.
Sorry Kathy, what was that?
We need a motion to approve that.
Um. You wanna call for a motion?
Is this something you're asking for?
Well, I was asked two pers- I mean, yes, we will need to do it if we're going to digitize.
Okay, yeah.
And I make a motion that we uh, join and, and pay the amount out of state aid.
Out of what state?
Second. All those in favor, Laurel?
Bless you.
Discussion, um, just for you, as I'm looking on the website, so please contact digital at BPL dot org about including your content in. Get it done, so maybe contact them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to them and get more
Okay.
details. Um, once we join, hopefully they'll be like.
It makes sense because people, if someone wanted to find out something about the topic, they wouldn't call Langley Adams.
Right.
Even though the material would be there.
Yeah.
It was digitized and put into the whole system.
Yeah.
However, that works.
Yes, yes. I know there are people who really are traditional who like to look at things in person. But this would definitely help preserve the items, so.
Well, we could be, so if we look at people twice.
Yeah.
I want to see.
And I would try to tell them what we got, right?
Yeah.
Laurel again. Lindsay, you're here.
Yes.
I, I just want to make sure that we, that we do this. You know, I think we should be members. I think the Digital Commonwealth is really a good thing. But I would just want to make sure we do it, you know, the annual fee will be, you know, we want to make use of it, so.
Yes.
Probably need to come up with a plan of what should be sent first and, and I'm sure Darcy, when we talk with them, they'll give you some, some guidelines.
Yeah, they'll give some guidelines. I know that Lauren has some ideas too, because she's been working to organize everything, so.
Just how it's stuff is shipped there and everything, I'm just.
I know in the past that they've actually come to pick things up, so.
That would be super.
That, that would be wonderful, but I don't know if that's what they still do, so I will find out all of that. Well, not here, here, but they've gone to pick up things to digitize from libraries.
No, what I was saying, I thought maybe not a member, you just have.
Not here. But hopefully.
I think it's very exciting to move forward on this.
Yes.
But again, like you said, we, we're paying, it's a yearly. We just have to like, let's go. We're twelve months.
Yes. Yes. Um, so, thank you.
But we are voting, yeah.
No, any more discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Okay, I echo my thank you. What, I had the dropdown on the, I think, um.
Shelving.
Oh, yes, so shelving assembly team, that was part of this, so. The um, the first round of um, the shelving that we had done the capital request for last year. I don't know exactly when that will come, but I am guessing within the next few months, it will be ordered and arriving. So Steve can do a little bit, but like I said, he's busy and you know, it, it's going to need an additional bit of teamwork. So if anybody knows anybody who would be great at assembling um, shelves on casters for the library, please let me know and we can assemble. Well, it's, I, how many was it? I feel like the number standing out to me is, is twelve, but let me, let me double check.
Have you set up this kind before? Are they, oh, is it Ikea level shelves or?
I think it's a little bit more. We've had them set up before, but we've only ordered like one at a time. So that's, that's the issue.
The newsletter and on Groveland Town Crier, if a volunteer.
So it would be twelve.
High schoolers who need volunteer hours, if there were adults.
Yes. So I, I'm just, you know, putting this word out here, right, just in case anybody here knows. But if you don't, that's okay. Um, it's, it'll be twelve for the first round of them, so.
And I think too, some of the people from um, the uh, the children's room group that have been buying and doing things in the children's room, they may be very interested in helping. So maybe if we put out a lot of calls for help.
Oh, the Reardon.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep, them and the Friends of the Library and Town Crier and our newsletter and the town newsletter. I asked Rebecca to put uh, blip in the um, in the town newsletter, the letter that she does also at the end of every month.
What is the new community, um, most Groveland community needs? Yeah. So you're thinking, what was their time?
Within the next few months, I have to confirm with Rebecca when we're ordering, but um.
But you all have to come in the next year.
Likely the first round would come all at once, um. But I don't think they'll all be stored here specifically, um, I'm not totally sure, but. Yeah, first round.
The children.
Yes, so from, whatever Rebecca told me, it can be picked up as scrap metal, so um, that is uh, I think actually the town can do that from what she told me. I'll double check, but.
Yeah, there's that process.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the deaccessioning. Yeah, probably. I'll, I'll see, I mean, because it's cut because of the reasons that we're replacing it in the first place, we might not need to deaccession it because it's not um, in its complete form or, and it's, it's sharp, so.
Yeah, the top, the top parts of all those were cut off. And then not guarded with any kind of protective covering, so they're sharp and um.
Yeah, some of them are falling apart too, so some of them maybe yes, but some of them might not need to be deaccessioned, so.
Well, they're working with Rebecca.
Yeah. She, she'll let me know and I can bring all that to a meeting, um, hopefully next month then. Keep everyone posted. What was next on my dropdown? Okay.
Oh, the furniture.
Yes, furniture, sir. Okay. So. Oh, well. You want to do the furniture next?
I'm reading it, it's so small.
I understand that, yeah, um, so just as background information, especially for our new member, every year I turn in an action plan to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Um, it's based on our strategic plan. Basically, I have to list this goal and then actions that we plan to take in the next, next fiscal year. So like, it would be starting next July first, um. And there, there isn't really a limit to how many actions, or you don't even have to list every single goal for every, every year. However, I've always done it based on our current strategic plan. Um, because it was a little bit more strict with what we were trying to achieve, so. We'll achieve this by this fiscal year, this by this fiscal year. But this year, I would like, I'm also involving the staff in this, but input from people, um, what you think would be beneficial for us to try to go for in fiscal year twenty-six. So next July through the following June. And we don't have to do an actual brainstorm right now, because you can obviously email or call me with any ideas you might have. But it would be based on the goals in the new strategic plan, so goal ones, goal one through six, um. So if you happen to think of like, oh, this type of training would be good for somebody, you can it, you know, you don't, you don't have to like assemble them all into one email too. You can put them in all sporadic, it's fine. And then what'll happen is I'll assemble it all into a file and present it to, to this board next month. And it has to be in by December first.
On December first?
Yeah.
So you still want us to kind of follow our
No, no, the new one. So these goals from the new one, um, this is what we'll be going with because the new strategic plan starts on July first as well.
So we're doing the action plans for.
Yeah, so like this action has to do with goal four. So how can we improve the facility within fiscal year twenty-six, for example? Um, so basically, I'm just asking anybody for input rather than just like throwing something together and then probably not having it happen. Which was kind of the past few years. I've tried to do some of the things we submitted for the action plan, but because I think so much has changed between twenty eighteen and now. Yeah, exactly. There was a lot we didn't anticipate, um. So we were a little bit more locked in. So this, this time, you know, there might be things I don't think of. Um, I know that the staff have already made some interesting suggestions that I plan to include in the the action plan as well, so. Um. So please throughout the month, if you have any ideas, please come to me. I am not going to shoot down anybody's ideas and continue is fine. Continue is fine, as long as it fits into one of the goals.
To put it back on you, Darcy, what would you say is the number one thing we should try to accomplish under our strategic plan for our annual action plan?
So I know that technology got the most votes as a priority.
Right.
The um, for the survey. So I, I do have some ideas for the technology one as well, and some of the staff have made some suggestions. And it's okay if you think, oh, this might have already been said, but I, I don't know. Please just tell me anything you think of and you don't have to do it right now. It can be a throughout the month brainstorm for you.
Right.
I, I think you need to hear from us.
Yeah, so before the next meeting for sure, um, I would say maybe by the Friday before. So that I have time to assemble the file and send it to everybody with the files for the meeting. So that I have time to assemble the file and send it to everybody with the files for the meeting. Yeah, I would welcome anybody's ideas.
Thank you.
I understand. I keep forgetting to change this to twenty five. Okay, so the fun part, um, the furniture. I, um, so as you saw, I sent some files with some information about furniture. I'm trying to follow a dark blue theme because I think it would look really good with the new carpeting. And I also have. Found, um. Well, Evangeline also had some ideas for the YA section, I think would spruce it up. Also, just to mention that. You know, it looks like there's enough shelving there. However, there is a shelf that is Boeing that is. That we definitely would need to replace, so it'll, it'll be very beneficial if we can do this. For her and for the patrons. No, they're the same, um. So it's YA though, so they're, yeah, it's not. Yeah, it's the YA section. So we don't have to necessarily worry about that. So you know, there, there are obviously the color options that we can do for those.
So is that, is that a bench and then the shelves would go on either side of it?
So the bench actually can attach to, yeah, 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 so the, the bench can attach to it if we want it. To look that way, which could be pretty cool. But what helps is that it has a few different options that can be experimented with. So with two benches, it would give more seating. And I was thinking we could put one of the charging stations in there too.
So can we just, I just can't figure this out. So there's an open shelf and what is this?
That's the back of the shelf.
Oh, okay.
It's just a single side. Yeah, that just, um.
So we could have an open shelf and one that's, that's a bad.
So no, the, the back bits on those shelves, that's, that's why. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you don't see the wall?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Back panels are the cheapest part of that part.
But then I'm, I'm a little confused because the height is seventy two, but the bookshelf is sixty.
No, no, the, um. It would be sixty. So I have, I know it's so small, but I have sixty selected. Yeah, they're showing it, but it's, it's, it would be sixty. Uh, I would, I would definitely have the match, I promise.
And where would Evangeline like those to be placed?
So in the YA section, um, so. She, she and other staff and volunteers have kind of been playing around with making it look more welcoming, but of course it doesn't have. Any seating or anything as of yet. So we're trying to make it a place where. Kids can actually just go in and read their manga if they, if they want. So. Everything would fit if we get rid of the bow shelves, the bow shelf. Yes.
I have a real stupid question. Those benches don't open, right? The, the seat doesn't flip open.
No, I don't think it does. It, it just sits on top of the, the piece.
Thank you.
She has ideas where they're gonna. And up against the wall for the bench.
Yeah, she's already done measurements and all of that.
With the bench and the two bookcases.
Two benches.
Well, each bench would have two bookcases and a bench, right?
No, no, just, um, there would just be an extra bench for extra seating. So there, there's two shelves. The, um, there's two shelves, one bench in the middle, and then another bench can be. Either near it or on another side if, if we attach them.
Like it's modular. Grow and change as.
So you got a bench in front of the window.
Can't hear a word he said.
He's wondering if the bookcases are gonna block the window.
Oh, thank you.
Could, however, like, like Caitlin said, it's modular, so we can put one. Where the Boeing shelf is, which is up against the, a wall. So there are lots of options.
So the second bench will be freestanding or it would also have two shelves?
It wouldn't have two additional shelves. It would just be the two shelves.
Just a total of two shelves. Just go out, look at it and then we'll figure it out. But I mean, so the bench is going under the window and then the two shelves are going on either side against the wall? Or coming out this way?
They're not, no, they, I think it would all just be. There's, I think, one against the wall. And then like this way, and then a bench like this. And then.
Understand the bathroom piece.
Cause the walls are cinder block, so it would be bedding.
And maybe it allows for flexibility if.
But I think the shelves are gonna attach somewhere in the middle of the bench, so you're gonna have a space between the shelf and the wall.
We don't have any sound anymore.
I don't either.
Oh, try again, sorry.
Nope, that's. Now I can, now I can.
Now I can too.
Yeah, it keeps fading in and out. Let me try a different microphone.
They were trying to, um. Still can't hear Nancy.
No sound, no. Well, I can hear you. I cannot hear Laurel.
Yes, I can hear you now, yes.
YA section, when they talked about putting it out there, was going to have like. Bookcase walls to give them a cozy little, almost a only room, but not a room.
Yeah, but it were, it doesn't really fit, um, it doesn't. Fit and I mean, different librarians have different ideas too. That's important to consider. But, but yeah, with. With that, it doesn't fit in the section, like adding all of that. So we, and again, we can, if things do seem to be able to fit, we can change things around with this. That's, that's the beauty of those.
The beauty of it is the flexibility.
Yes, that's, that's the purpose of it to begin with.
Darcy, can I ask you? I totaled up the other items, uh, but I didn't total up that, that part of it.
Oh, this was sixty one seventy two.
How much?
Sixty one seventy two total.
And you've checked other sort, resources and, and that, that's about?
Yeah, yeah, and there, there is, um, if, if you look at the pictures, they do offer a good discount too.
And what is the discount based on?
I don't know exactly what it's based on, but it looks like there are. Prices that you find other places and then they have a specific price on K log.
The price, the dis, okay.
Yeah.
So. On that part. I'd like to make a motion. To provide those items requested by the youth services librarian. And to remove those funds from the donation account. Specifically, somehow honoring the. Very significant contribution by Jerry Tibbetts in his and his wife's names. Uh, which I believe came to thirty four thousand dollars the last time I talked to the attorney that was handling that estate. That money is already in the donation account, and I think at some point we need to. Also see a brass plate or two small brass plates stating that it is. In honor and memory of Gerard Tibbetts, who did so much for this library.
Yeah, I agree.
That's my motion.
Was that, that was a, a, a full motion?
That was a full motion just for that youth services section, the shelving, the backing and the benches that we talked about.
And a brass plaque, right?
Yes, absolutely.
You need to put a price on it?
Well, she said that it was six thousand one hundred and seventy two, but that's without shipping and without the brass plaque. So I, I don't, I couldn't guess what the shipping is. We can go up to say. A, a, an amount of seven thousand dollars out of the, I think it was thirty three, I have it written down, but I don't have it in front of me. The thirty three thousand that came out of the remainder trust that I had, uh, worked out with the attorney at the time. And, um. That's an excellent use for it. It's a small amount of everything, what he donated.
I think once we establish a invoicing account with them.
I think I do.
What do you need, Nancy?
I don't, um, no, I, I, you're making a motion to provide the requested shelving and bench. Um, and any.
I think there's two benches.
Yes, benches. And.
Hon- honoring the contribution of. And his, and his wife.
Yep.
Mary Ann Tibbetts. That was donated to the library a great deal more, but that was, uh, I think that would honor them and I think, and I know, uh. Part of the furniture that is still existing in the children's room was donated by him when his wife died, so it kind of ties in.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I also have, um, uh, any additional delivery charges would be.
Can I, can I just suggest seventy five hundred and that way up to, up to seventy five hundred?
Good idea, yes, Lee.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Have a second on that?
Yes, we do, yes.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Darcy, thank, thank, thank Evangeline for going to so much work and effort to make it a nice cozy place. We don't get one inch more of space, but we certainly make a lot of use of the space we have.
Exactly. Okay. So then, there's a few other files to get to. Yes, we could talk about these. The, the armchairs slash, some are armless, some are not, because it's different types of accessibility, so. What I had suggested in the file was. Getting three of each, just because seeing as we're replacing. Two freestanding chairs and two couches, this, um. It's, it seems like a fair trade, um, in terms of space and items. And then. I know in the past, we have talked about for some of the, the chairs, putting a little table in between. And I think that would also look really nice. So I suggested two of those.
Suggested two of the conversation tables, is that right?
Yes, so three of the chairs with the arms, three of the ones with the, without arms. And then two conversation tables, and then I had suggested three charging stations, but. That can be, there can be wiggle room with that, if you think that's too many. I wanted to put one with YA. And then we still have the rest of the library, so that's why I had suggested three.
Makes sense, like one YA, like one of the children's.
Yeah, and they, they are mobile, they have wheels, so we can, if. If there are lots and lots of people in one section one day, we, we can take, oh, oh my gosh, here's, here's another.
Very similar.
I, I don't think Nancy and I can hear you, Laurel, I'm sorry.
I've been looking on Wayfair, three person, four person, ultimate reception. Chairs with, with charging tables, it's a hundred percent genuine leather. Five piece set, four piece set, six piece set, I mean, a four person waiting room reception chairs with charging tables. For four thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars. It's one, two, four chairs and three charging stations. For four thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars, or four thousand seventeen.
I.
As opposed, and usually is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars, so. I mean, they're having a sale and it's free shipping. I'm just trying to save money.
I know, I just, I.
I think this is awfully expensive for one chair.
It is, though I think they would last a long time. The vinyl would be good, and I also know that there are multiple staff members that would be opposed to buying leather, so.
And then Wayfair, you never know like what's gonna get, like, it could be a great one, it could be back stock because it's terrible and it was returned.
Oh, okay. That's awfully expensive for one, I can share.
The quality just, just doesn't.
Well, this is from a catalog, it's like school catalogs. Act on an extra fifty percent. Chop, or you could buy a box of chop, chop they don't do anymore, let's see. Um, for instance, my husband said when he used to teach, he had to order through school catalogs. To order batteries. Now you can get batteries at CBS, you can get batteries at Market Basket, they were paying five dollars. For a box of double A batteries where you can get them, because they upcharge you. And then there's the shipping and handling, and then they get you that way. I just, I mean, what is the shipping and handling? Are we talking two thousand dollars for this? Or more, or sixteen hundred, say, maybe not true there.
Oh, sorry, Kathy, you got.
No, I, I was just, I, I, I didn't add, I didn't add it correctly, but I, the, the chairs with the arms. No, the chairs without the arms came to three thousand one hundred and forty seven dollars, with the arms, four thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. I put down three of the conversation tables, so my number is off, but at three, it was twelve forty, one thousand two hundred and forty five dollars. Um. Yeah, and the stations, I, I put eight hundred and seventy because I, I thought two would be enough, but listening to you about having one in the, the youth services, I don't know, I, I have, for the charging stations, have we compared prices anyplace other than Demco?
I did come, well, I compared multiple, yeah.
You did.
Um, at least for the companies that we've used before that I know are reliable. Um, but I think your total would be similar to mine because I did three charging stations and two tables. If that makes sense.
Yeah. To break this, I'm just gonna give him, uh, when, at one time when we did buy items from Demco, shelving that was needed at the library, we raised the money through the book sale, uh. The cost of shipping was incredible, so to split it up, to do it little in bits, that doesn't work because then you're paying shipping over and over and over again.
Yeah, it's better that it's in one.
I wonder, um. I don't, I'm, I, I'm just trying to p- compare quality. I understand what you're saying about leather. I'm so old, I haven't thought of that, but yes, people do, you know, it'd be like me wandering in there with a fur coat. Um.
It's a bad, yeah, but.
I'm wondering about, we, we had talked about WB Mason, and I didn't really, uh, look that deeply into it. Did, did you see anything or was there anything?
I did look on it too Kathy.
Yeah.
Um, and didn't really see anything that, that really worked.
Yeah.
Darcy, did you notice if there were like comparable prices there when you were looking?
Well, when I, when I looked or when Darcy, I'm sorry.
Darcy.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Or you, or you Kathy, or you.
Uh, well, I, I didn't compare quality. I mean, I looked under doctors' reception offices to see what, and there was a difference in price, but I'm not sure quality, and I know a lot of libraries, all libraries just about um, order from library suppliers, and I understand what Laurel's saying because I have family that are in the teaching positions and, um. In a lot of cases, there's kickbacks and that's, that's why they have to, they're forced to order under, under, uh, large companies, but, um, I'm listening to Darcy and knowing that, uh, when we bought in the past fifteen years, anything we bought has been from a library supplier, even though the prices, yeah.
Okay.
What do we do?
So I was sharing with Darcy while we were chatting Kathy, um, I found it look, what, I'd have to dig deeper, but it looks to be the exact same mobile charging tower for half the price at Home Depot with free delivery.
Oh, okay, so we can pick down that, that'll help.
Two oh nine ninety-five, available to get delivered next week, um.
And there's no-
We would wanna like dad make sure it's the same product, but, but it looks exactly the same.
Like it, yeah.
Is it the same manufacturer, Kaitlyn?
Yeah, it's still, it's called exactly the same thing, Lux Power Mobile AC and USB Charging Tower, brand rating four point six out of five. Uh, has the same picture she posted on the thing too, so.
And that helps a lot, that would hit down some of the price.
One, right.
I make a motion that we purchase these three charging stations from Home Depot as suggested by Caitlyn Rocco, uh. That's my motion.
Funded from?
From Home Depot.
Oh, funded from?
Oh, I'm sorry, funded from, uh, from the state aid.
Oh, I thought we were doing donations.
I thought we were gonna do it from Vanguard.
Or the, the money from Vanguard.
Well, we're gonna get them a little sooner, and that money hasn't come from Vanguard, and I'm thinking-
I have to make sure they can invoice us. I can, I have to make sure they can establish-
Or I'll give you my charge card number, you charge it and I'll be reimbursed.
Okay.
Let's get them in there, let's get started, let's get it rolling.
So she's made a motion. Second? I'll second it. Discussion to buy three charging stations from Home Depot at less than price.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, that'll help a lot, thank you.
That helps a lot, Kaitlyn, thank you. Oh, we bring, and we're good.
It's the first and second.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Darcy, tomorrow, I'll give you my credit card number to order those, okay?
Yes, give it all, say it now.
I want you all to write down my credit card number, my social security number and all that.
So, we also need the expiration date and the, the code.
I will, I'll do that. The, the security code, right?
Yes, yes.
Nancy?
Yes. Yes.
Kathy?
You know it.
Lee, yeah. Caitlin? Oh, yes.
Well, thank you everybody and Caitlin and Kathy for that, because that, that helps a lot.
Absolutely, that we have to break it down, we break it down a little bit. We've covered the services, we've covered the charging stations, now let's take a peek at the furniture and, uh. Do we have a manufacturer on those chairs, Darcy, by any chance?
More, so.
Come up with something good, Caitlyn.
Yeah.
Right now.
It's just modular lounge.
That's better. It's definitely not good.
Lost sound again.
That's, there's nobody's talking.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the modular seating.
Yeah, if there's a manufacturer on it.
I don't think it's this, but let me just double check. Oh, I think it might be actually.
Oh.
The Phoebe.
Yes, I see it on there, by people.
Um. Phoebe, so it's just the name of the.
Yeah, yeah.
So I see, I found the armless one. But it doesn't. I know, I know, it doesn't have that, I mean, I can talk to them directly. I know we're trying to.
I'm just wondering if, if you're ordering from Demco, they're ordering from, they had to get a kickback, they had to get money.
Yeah.
And they're ordering from more, more company, maybe going right to more company.
Yes, truly, this is outdoor, this is not the same thing. Now I'm like, oh, indoor product, okay, indoor, but not the curb. There's outdoor Phoebes as well.
Oh, okay.
But that's the wrong Phoebe, I'm trying to find the right Phoebe. Honestly. I can talk to them directly if you'd like and bring that to November. Um.
Maybe factory must sell to other distributors, and I wonder if we could find another distributor like Caitlyn, yeah. Anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We just weren't talking again.
Oh, okay. No, they look like, wow, that's a good idea.
Offline?
I guess so, because the, I, I can't figure out this whole grade thing. And yeah, I can't figure it out without speaking to them.
Why don't we wait?
Yeah, it's, I'm, that kinda is probably about waiting another month, that's-
Right, yeah, I don't wanna wait another month. But.
How about, can we, Kathy, do you think we could make a motion to approve the furniture that we're seeing with the stipulation that, that there's gonna be more research in, as to the source? Think that'd be appropriate?
I think it would be appropriate rather than waiting another month.
Right, exactly.
Well, what the amount is right now.
Yeah.
And if she can get a better deal.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And it was gotten in the middle, this, we don't know what shipping and handling, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, what did you say?
Do you want to include the little tables in that too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Don't mind doing, you know, seeing.
But I didn't hear what Jan said.
Shipping and handling is, uh, you know, so we can say-
Sometimes it's a killer.
You know, the amount of the furniture, but shipping and handling may be a couple hundred dollars. Um, so, we don't know.
So we just, let's go with, you, you've got an amount there, right?
Yeah.
So how about if we go with that amount, up to that amount, pending the idea that you're gonna see if you can find it through a different source? Does that make sense?
I had said seven six hundred ninety-nine dollars, now you back out the charging stations and you cut down one of the, uh, tables.
Tables, yeah.
You're looking at six, five thousand, four thousand something, right?
No, I've got eighty-four, one, four.
Are you adding in the table with the four chairs?
Yeah, well, there are six chairs.
This, well, I'm looking at the table with the four chairs around it, are you adding that in?
Oh.
Yeah.
We've we're not, we weren't looking at those.
Thirty-nine dollars, and the four chairs came to one thousand five hundred and forty dollars for a total of two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That was the table that you'd sit out to do research or whatever, it was a table without the grooves.
Okay. Um.
That had come with the four chairs in, as pictured, at two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Are you including that in the, uh, the chairs with the arms, the armless chairs and the, um, conversation tables?
No, that, so, uh, we hadn't even been talking about that at all, because-
Well, keep that out for right now.
Yeah.
But I wanna add it in at the end, because if we're ordering from one-
Tables? You found the tables. You're so resourceful.
The thirty-inch round conversation tables for three seventy-one, eight-four, free shipping, chips and fifteen weight.
Oh my gosh.
So it only does, so you have four fifteen, it's three seventy, so, but that saves forty-five dollars per table.
Yeah.
Plus free shipping.
So I had the three tables at one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Well, Kathy, my-
You're saying per table. So. So why don't we make a motion, I'll make a motion, to spend up to eight thousand dollars, is-
What's your, what's your?
So. So, without the- Okay, so without changing the tables, which we will. Um, it was eighty, eight thousand four hundred and fourteen.
Right.
So we will definitely get, go with the lower cost tables.
The square table.
No, we haven't even talked about that yet.
Right, okay, so that's off the table for right now.
Four hundred.
One four.
I make a motion to spend up to eight thousand.
Nine thousand, we can ship them.
Nine, I was gonna say.
You have to figure shipping.
All right.
Plus I'm pursuing it.
Okay, I make a motion, spend up to nine thousand dollars on hmm, the, first we just discussed, um. The recharge-
Three armchairs.
Not the charging, those are-
Oh, we were, we were taking that out of the- The artist chairs, the arm chairs. Conversation table.
Yeah. Yeah.
To be taken from
The Vanguard funds.
Vanguard funds.
The trust funds. Out of TD Bank North.
Hmm.
And in the event that there is any catch-up on those, the checking account, that we drop to the donation account
Hmm.
to do that. The money's there.
With, with the provision that Darcy is going to do research on, see if we can get better friends, but I mean, yeah, no.
With her magic fingers, finding thing, things in her computer.
I found the other chairs, so.
Oh.
I wanna, um, the, the-
The wood guest chairs.
Okay.
Again, saving probably like three twenty-six instead of three eighty-five.
That still counts. Still helps, it still helps. Is that helps, because I think the tables.
If that's in chair.
Just have to make sure that the town has that as a vendor. That new company.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I'll always get the W nine. It'll be very important that we get the blues.
I'm telling you, the shipping will kill us, so.
Yes, so. So I will say those chairs are actually for the square tables, the square tables don't actually come with the chairs.
Right, okay, that's, that's what my, because the picture shows for-
I know, it makes it look all nice and pretty.
It shows the chairs as a separate price for a total of fifteen forty for the four chairs.
Yes, but we're giving them cheaper.
Yeah, plus I have, I'm a cushion, just for everybody.
Yeah.
To be happy.
Do we do our furniture count? We're talking three armchairs.
Yeah.
Three, no lines, whatever, four chairs, they'll, they'll go down.
Six, right?
Six.
So, okay, so we have three tables that we need to replace. So, there are four sides on each table. So that is twelve.
Well, cheers.
So if we do the twenty-six times, six times twelve is thirty-nine twelve. That's for those, those guest chairs. Um. Those are already voted on, but those are, there's the two of those, those are voted on. So, these square tables together is twenty-eight seventy-seven.
For how many of those tables?
Three.
Okay.
And then the chairs would be thirty-nine twelve together.
Whoa, can we find that anywhere else?
Caitlyn just did, that's the, that's the cheaper price.
Keep fading in and out, so it's hard for these.
We're talking about twelve chairs, Kathy.
Yeah, it's, it's, there are twelve chairs with the vinyl on them and wood finish and all that.
Okay, so we've got all kinds of, those, those tables and chairs are used a lot by tutors and their students that come in.
Yeah, that's, right, that's.
For our research, people doing research on all our information, that's great.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you can fight over some of the, the other chairs and then you can have some of these nice cushion ones too.
Right. Right.
I made a motion.
Okay, I seconded.
So you have the, the final number.
So.
Eight thousand.
So these, these separate, the, the square tables and the guest chairs, those, that's sixty, six thousand seven hundred eighty-nine.
I can't hear Laurel's man.
You mean it, combining it with?
Yeah.
Combine everything, so you do all the- Combine everything, so you do all the. And, yeah.
So we think fifteen would be enough, or do you?
Well, forgetting one, some of this is pretty shit, isn't it?
There, um.
Yeah.
There is. Actually, I think the bid price has changed, but I will check.
Should we do?
But fortunately, we also will be purchasing from different vendors, so that might lower that.
I just. Sure.
Yeah, or we could make three different motions.
Yeah.
Well, split, did you do different motions?
We'll do it that way. The soft furniture, then the, then the tables and chairs are two separate.
Okay, so we already did that part, the, the soft, so this is six, seven, eight, nine. No, no, I'm just saying that's what this section will be.
So first motion on the soft furniture, we'll do that first, that was, you said nine thousand? Up to nine thousand, depending on the fifteen and four, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so up, was up to nine thousand dollars to cover the new, um, soft furniture.
Conversation.
They have the conversation tables.
I'm second.
All those, any discussion? Laurel?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jan? Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Well, now I will really appropriate up to seven thousand dollars for the tables and chairs. Makes sense?
I second it.
Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Okay.
All that's left is the forty dollar flag.
Too much money. Absolutely not.
I'm so happy Zazzle exists.
No, absolutely no forty dollars for a flag.
Yes.
That's what we talked about, we talked about having one that was like an angel. And so.
Yeah, and, uh, so the thing is, I can't find anything else that, that's that shape, that, the, so I did have the company that I had talked to, Flag of Manor, um, revised the price based on size, it didn't change it very much. So I went looking for other options, so this is what we have, it's still small enough, um.
Dollars if it lasts a couple of years, that's fine, it doesn't owe us anything.
Have our logo, it says.
You and I will be back, we'll go together in a couple of years.
Is this going to be the color?
I hope, yeah, I'd like it to match with our furniture.
Yeah. I like it.
Not that, it's, it's more like, like that.
It's a nice shock color, it looks beautiful.
Yep, I think it's really important to get that back out there.
And we would try to, is it okay?
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Make a motion that we approve the flag if we take it out of state aid.
There you go.
Second? All those in favor, Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jan? Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes?
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Yay! How does everyone feel?
I feel good, I think that's great, I think we've done, really watched the cost.
No, no, you're doing your job. I know, I know, we're, we're all just doing our jobs and we're all contributing. I know.
Though I, I understand, my, my goal is to make these last for the next century, so.
Well, hey.
We'll see.
For a century?
I think the furniture that's in the library.
I know.
Lasted, look close to that.
If, if those, those statues we hear when I brought.
They have been reupholstered.
Yeah, so my goal.
So, but.
And you can deaccession those, and God help the people, maybe they want them like at the garden, where the, you know, the garden club meets, at the little red schoolhouse. Or maybe they want them at VZ, or maybe nobody wants them at all, so.
They might want the, the chair versions of those. The couches are off.
And the cushions.
But those others, the wooden tables and chairs, those, those are sturdy.
They're sturdy, however, the tops, they're splintering apart, because, yeah, I think having a laminate top will be very helpful, especially with that, that, those tops, like, you're right, and there's a groove.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a lot.
It really was.
Okay, next is evaluation form.
Oh.
Anyone have questions on it?
I was confused as to if I was supposed to fill this out for those, like.
Not for this meeting.
What the process was.
Also, was that what you asked me, I think you meant like for this meeting?
Right.
That's what I was confused.
Well, for this meeting, but also in general, like, is this what we do? Okay.
Okay. What, what happens is you could either email me or drop it off with Darcy and a C. And I consolidate it, and then when we get together in November, we just go over it. The goals, pretty much, well, let me back up. We have a very small library, and our director does clerical functions, she does supervise. So tying the evaluation form to the job description leads us through a whole lot of Mickey Mouse stuff. You know what I mean? That a lot of us, I'm going to be aware of what Darcy does, so when you fill out the form, leaving it blank is fine.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, I don't know.
That's not, then that's a very good thing to have there, if, if you're not day to day in the library, you're better to say, I don't know, rather than try to guess that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and when we do the averages, that number isn't taken into account, so five people answer it in three dollars or four dollars, it's five, it generates the average. My perspective, the key to the evaluation of form is really the comments that go with it, so that's what drives a lot of the discussion.
And we do not figure out the smart goals.
Right, I usually do a write-up of goals for the next calendar year.
We don't do that section.
No.
Okay, this is you know. You just put your little X's on here, okay?
You always have to be very cautious to remember the fact that we hire a library director to run the library. The Board of Trustees doesn't necessarily run the library, so we have to be respectful of that.
But don't we have to be reminded of the goals for last year, so that we can?
Yes.
That would be really helpful.
Yes.
Which ones we decided on?
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't, I can forward them to you.
That would be really helpful.
That would be very helpful.
Unless Laurel finds it right this second. If not, that's okay.
I do. Oh, and archival, yeah.
Yeah, the strategic plan.
Access to our local history collection, is that it, including Robert Buckel, Delche.
And then they're, yes, perfect, that's what this is.
And always keeping in mind that we are.
Yes, that this last year, so if we look at the last year's goals, the tree sets, or, you know, we looked at last year and then look at the evaluation.
Yeah, did I do the strategic plan, that I work on the Buckel collection?
Send this out.
Always mindful of the fact that we are very understaffed.
So when you want this?
Uh, November first would be great.
What was the date, Bob?
November first.
November first.
Please let me know if they didn't come, because I didn't think it was from that, at all, that it's called. Yep, just can't.
Those of you who are on Excel, feel free to send me it on this Excel. No, no, if you have it, yes, if not, tie a copy is fine.
The file is a word file, though.
Is it word?
Yeah.
File is a word.
Okay, word.
I don't think it'll translate.
So it's the narrative.
Are we good? Let's see, because I had a question, at our last meeting, we said that we would talk about youth outreach this month, but.
Yes.
Gotta do that another time, right? We need to.
Yeah, we knew that this would be a big furniture discussion, so we kind of had deferred it to another meeting.
Um, November is going to be tight, honestly.
Yeah.
Yes, it's coming next week, next month.
I think if we're doing that, we probably should have Evangeline in the meeting.
Yes.
As we just said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, see, I don't hear everything you say.
Yeah, yeah, so I know, also, just keeping in mind, December will also be a doozy, because that's when we review the budget and.
Yeah.
Uh, I think for the next few months, it'll be a doozy, but we'll put it in.
Yeah, we have to put that on for like four or five months now, that's true.
Yeah. But I think it's best to have the Youth Services Director in on a discussion about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Patrons are going to be so happy.
That's what it's for.
I know, that, I'm, I'm glad we're finally using the money, yes, so.
Okay, any other comments? The move.
What's that, what did he say?
Motion to move, relieve. Go away.
One thing, I have one thing, I have one thing.
Okay.
And, and I, I will take care of it outside of the meeting, but I wanted to bring it up in the meeting. Nancy, we need to really write, and, and maybe Laurel will do it, we need to write a letter to the woman who, after five months of Michelle Beegan, myself, and Laurel, and at some point Rebecca, dealing with Vanguard, I finally have a woman who helped me through the whole process. We were sent forms and forms and forms, told we had to get in touch with all kinds of people, but we didn't, she helped me through it. I have her name, I have her boss's name and the address, and I'd just like to ask, if I provide this to you outside of the meeting, would you kindly write a letter? Uh, of gratitude for this woman, because believe me, she finally walked me through the whole thing, and I'm talking about ours, so.
Yes.
Thank you, that's it.
Good idea, thank you.
Fabulous.
Second? Well, those, anything about Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jan?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna stop this recording. And I'm gonna send it to Chris to.